Recording, please. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, September ninth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order. And if Krista could please call the roll.
Councilmember Soltes, I'm here. Councilmember Porter here. Councilmember Hartsack, here.
Councilmember Hertzhausen, present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have the court, Your Honor.
Thank you. And just for the audience, um, Councilmember Hartzhausen is joining us virtually tonight. So if everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. And next is approval agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, man.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the agenda state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next is, we have three items for public communication. We do have two proclamations. If counsel would please join me in front of the dais. First. Better? All right. We have a proclamation for Constitution Week. And we have someone here to accept the proclamation?
It looks like our recipient has not arrived.
Okay, do we wait on this one then, or?
Uh, sure.
Let's wait. Just in case they can make it. Next, I will ask Ryan Rengley to join us. Right here in the center.
Always.
Always. Center of attention, right where you're easy. So we, uh, Ryan is joining us from the storehouse. We have a proclamation. Whereas the city of Covington recognizes the importance of adequate nutrition as a basic human right for our residents and neighbors. And whereas the city of Covington supports our local food banks, which provide necessities to improve the quality of life of individuals and families facing food insecurity to help them thrive and to prevent health issues associated with a lack of proper nourishment. And whereas our food banks, working with the city of Covington, local churches, community groups, and volunteers distribute food to thousands of Covington residents annually. That's over a million pounds annually is distributed. Whereas to bring awareness to the issue of food insecurity in our community, the emergency feeding program coordinates the annuals Mayor's Day of Concern on the third Saturday in September each year. So now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, as Mayor's Day of Concern for the hungry in the city of Covington, and strongly urge all residents to donate food or funds to our local food bank, the storehouse, to nourish those who are hungry. And Ryan, Ryland, I would like to present this to you behalf of the storehouse. And if there's anything you would like to say?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we're having the food drive. This year it's at Safeway, Fred Meyer, and Dollar Tree in Covington from nine to three, so you can drop off food, buy food there. And we're also adding Kona Ice. They have a out from eleven and to five P M. this year, and they are going to donate a part of their sales back to the storehouses for us as well.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and read this next one, then we can present it to them. So we do have a proclamation for, uh, Constitution Week. We present this each year. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five marks the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention. And whereas public law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this remarkable document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas all American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, need to understand and honor the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution to support, preserve, and defend it against all adversity. Now therefore, we, the city council, the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five to be Constitution Week in Covington, and we urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibility responsibilities which that privilege involves. So we will get this to the Lakota chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution and, um, just, thank you. All right, that is it. And then, um, council can join me behind the desk. You have a presentation. Krista, I will give the view. Thank you, Paul. Next, we have a presentation from the King County Library System about the library impact on community. David Wright. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Welcome. Thank you for having me here, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you so much. Uh, just getting my slides up here and that I have. Excellent. Okay. Um, so my name is David Wright. I'm the regional manager for KCLS, uh, who oversees operations here at the Covington Library. And I'm here tonight to just update you and the public on the library's work to fulfill our mission to inspire the people of King County through, uh, to succeed through ideas, interaction, and information. Uh, this year KCLS launched a new promotional campaign called Curiosity Isn't Quiet. Uh, our focus is sharing how the library isn't just a place of quiet contemplation, although that is still part of what we do. Um, it's a place where learning happens out loud, uh, from embracing your creative side in our craft programs and maker spaces that we have at Bellevue and Federal Way. Uh, to seek your adventure through our museum and park passes, which are available at all of our locations. Um, to using our technology and job training resources through LinkedIn Learning as a launchpad to personal financial growth. The library invites you to indulge your curiosity. And I don't have the capacity of doing a video here today, but, uh, the link we have there leads to a really nice thirty-second video that our communications department's put together, just kind of encapsulating those themes of curiosity in the library. So curiosity isn't quiet. In fact, it speaks very loudly in the numbers that we see on this slide that feature our new library cards, uh, which were all produced, uh, and designed by local artists. So in two thousand twenty-four, the King County Library System had six hundred and seventy-seven thousand active cardholders, as well as ninety thousand student and teacher e-cards that are distributed automatically through local school districts. These cardholders are, were busy satisfying their curiosity with eleven point five million checkouts of physical library materials and ten point nine million digital checkouts. Uh, KCLS's digital collection is the second highest circulating collection in the world. And the, or second highest in the United States, excuse me, and the third highest in the world. And a significant portion of the library use that we had in that last slide is happening right here in Covington. From June of twenty-fourth to July of this year, uh, your friends and neighbors have visited the Covington, Covington Library a hundred and eighty thousand times. Uh, there are almost thirteen thousand community members who have used our library card at least once in the last year. And in the past year, twenty-three hundred people here in Covington signed up for a library card for the very first time. Um, and they've been using those cards a lot. We've loaned out over three hundred and sixty thousand fiscal items, uh, and three hundred and forty thousand digital items, uh, just there at the Covington Library in the past year. That's a lot of curiosity satisfied. So I wanted to spend a minute telling you a little bit about our library programming. So we did just recently wrap up our summer reading program, uh, Curious Creatures, and it had been, and it's been a tremendous success. As of July sixteenth, which is the last, last date that we have data for so far, uh, we had nine hundred and eighty-five registrations at the Covington Library. And of those, three hundred and five, uh, participants completed their reading goals and picked up a finishing prize. Uh, thanks to support of our, just, I can't say enough about them, the fantastic friends of the Covington Library. We continue to be able to provide high-value programming for, for all ages. Uh, kids this year got their summer off to a magical start with, with our popular, uh, Alex Zerby, the Zaniac, uh, and got to spend time with a mermaid character actor during our Under the Sea storytime in July. Uh, we were also pleased to participate in Covington's Ready, Set, Play program again this year, uh, where we had almost two, two hundred participants come by to earn their writing badge. Uh, our teens and tweens also had a lot of fun learning to needle felt two D mushrooms in June. And we didn't forget our, about our adult patrons. Uh, we had a well-attended Paint and Sit program in June, and we partnered with Arts Alliance Northwest in July to host a local art exhibit. And of course, that's just the summer we keep activities going year-round. Coming this fall, we'll have our Super Tuesday series of STEM events for kids monthly through December. Uh, on Saturday, twenty, September twenty-seventh, we'll be hosting the Page to Stage productions for their performance of Drew Knight, Private Eye, which should be a fun performance for our younger audience members. And for our young adults in October, we'll be holding a spooky season matinee every Friday afternoon. So teens and tweens can come to the library after school, watch a appropriately scary movie on our property, uh, have a nice little Hal- Halloween break. Uh, and for the grownups, we'll be hosting a canning demo at the end of September, where patrons can learn about dehydration, freeze drying, water bath, and pressure canning. And because AI is everywhere, uh, we're holding a program in November to help demystify tools like ChatGPT. So all this is in addition to our regular assortment of storytimes, book clubs, and other programs that patrons have come to know and love. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have for me.
Does council have any questions? Sure.
Um, David, thank you. Appreciate seeing those, that data on our library. That's really exciting. Just curious, who's the number one library?
Uh, number one in the world is Toronto.
Okay.
Uh, number one in the United States is LA County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll keep.
We'll keep walking away.
Um, so I like the idea of the spooky movies, uh, in October. I'm just curious how you're promoting that to the schools and, um, we just have, we have our youth council and that's, would be great to get them engaged in making sure that.
Yeah, we'd be happy to send information that way. We do reach out to the local schools, uh, typically with our, with our school visits. Our, our librarians make regular visits to the schools to talk about it. Um, we'll also be promoting it through our website and through our in-house flyers.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
Yeah, along the same lines, do you plan on offering refreshments, or is there an opportunity for somebody to sponsor refreshments at those events for the teens?
Uh, there is through the Friends.
Okay.
So if there was an interest in doing that, you could reach out to the Friends of Covington Library. Yes.
Uh, you mentioned that you had physical flyers in-house. Do you have them available to be handed out at a community event?
We do. Uh, we often take them to outreaches, like we'll take specific ones to target to the groups that we're meeting with. Um, if there are locations that you think might be a good place for us to read out to, we're happy to, uh, bring flyers along on a regular cadence so people can know more about the programs.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking of the storehouse.
Yeah.
Cause they, they get, um, you know, a hundred and fifty families per day of opening. And, uh, most of them have children, so I think it would be.
That's an excellent idea. Yeah, we, we do have a relationship with the storehouse. We do do collection at the library for them. I'm not sure if we do any flyer presentations with them, but I'll check with our librarians.
Okay, great. Thank you. I also just had a question. Um, I'm really amazed that the digital, um, is now almost, almost half of your uh, what's presented. Um, do you foresee that getting to where it's not equal anymore and you're just gonna get more and more digital and fewer physical going now? Or?
Um, it's always hard to tell the future. I think, I think we'll reach an equilibrium. Um, there are enough people who like the physical item of a book, then I don't think that's ever really gonna go away. Uh, I think it just really opens up the availability of reading to more folks, right? And especially with the use of audiobooks that I make, that allow us to use them in, in kind of different areas, different ways. I was just reading a book on my way over here, reading as in listening. On my, on my card.
Cads.
Yeah, so, um, I think eventually they'll kind of reach a, a, a point of stasis.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, true.
Um, just that, do you have the list of movies that you'll be showing at, uh, during October? Cause I know I teach middle school students and I know a lot of them will, I teach in Kent, but I know a lot of them will come right down Kangley and wanna come see some of those, cause they, this is stuff they're into. So I'd like to post that stuff up in my school.
The, uh, the exact movies are, are subject to, um, change, so we, we don't have an exact list yet. I know that the librarians have, uh, kind of a shortlist of things they're considering, but I'm happy as soon as we have it kind of shored down to show that out.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yes, hi. Um, I had a couple of questions, or I'm trying to look at my hand here at the same time. Um, before COVID, uh, Covington Library was open on Sundays. I was wondering if there's um, an initiative to bring that back. Do customers miss it? Maybe it's just me, um, and, uh, what the long-term, uh, schedule looks like.
Sure. Thank you for that question. Um, no, we're, we are aware that there is definitely a, a, a public interest in having those Sunday hours back at the Covington Library. Uh, while it's not anything that I'm ready to commit to as of yet, I know I can share, share that we are looking at expanding our Sunday hours next year to more locations. Uh, and Covington is certainly one of the locations that's under consideration for that expansion.
Okay, thank you. And then a couple more just related to some of the more recent policy changes, and I was just curious how, how they're going. One is the, the waiving of late fees, and then the other one is the auto renewal. I'm curious. I mean, that's, that's great as a library user. But I always wonder, does that impact, um, eh, your bottom line? Does it impact, uh, you know, books coming back and, and that kind of thing?
Um, sure, that's a great, great question. It's one we hear, uh, fairly often. Um, the, the overall net impact of removing fees and fines, um, has been to actually increase circulation and readership. Um, while not significantly impacting our bottom line, um, as it has historically stood, um, fines and fees are, are, are a very small portion of the amount of money that comes into a library system. I don't have the exact numbers for you, but I know it's, it's single digits, uh, probably like not even a full percent of our overall budget. So it really hasn't had much of an impact in that sense. Um, and actually with removing those fines, uh, what we've actually seen is people coming in again and bringing back materials that they've kind of held on to and kind of that, that shame sort of scenario, where you kind of just don't wanna deal with the frustration or like the shame going in and saying, yes, I, I owe money on these. So when we did it away, we actually saw a lot of materials return. Um,
Well, I
I missed the second part of the question, or I think.
Check out another book. I can defin, I mean, I have been, especially when I had a bunch of little kids, books in our house and, you know, so I can understand that. The, um, second one was the auto renewal.
Oh, the auto renewal. Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so I mean, that's, that's been a very well-received, um, uh, service that we've provided. Uh, public seems to really appreciate it. Uh, I know I appreciate the heck out of it, because there are many times where I have a book out and I am not nearly done and I get my renewal automatically and it makes the life a lot easier. So, um, and again, we haven't seen an impact on, on returns. In fact, things seem to be coming back in a good, a good way. The only thing we've seen that might be a little bit of a change is uh, a little bit more of delay and, and holes getting filled, but those, those renewals don't, those renewals won't go if there's a hold placed. So
Okay.
it's a minimal impact on the availability of it.
That's great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? David, thank you very much for being here, and thanks for a great presentation.
Thanks so much.
Lot of great information.
Appreciate it. Y'all have a good night. Have a great evening.
All right. Thank you all. Next is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Please note campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at city hall or during council meetings during public comments is prohibited by state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Um, I don't have a sign-in sheet, so is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Right? Is there anybody online? Yes, Kaylee.
Hello, um, Kaylee Stevens. I am the, uh, city of Covington resident. Um, so I live right against the Lake Point urban development. And, um, the big thing is right now the construction vehicles have been blowing through stop signs and like creating hazardous environments for the drivers in the area because, um, I was coming home yesterday or on Sunday on one, or Monday, yeah, it was yesterday. So one hundred eighty-sixth Place Southeast, turning on to Southeast two hundred sixtieth Street. I did not have a stop sign. I had the right of way and I was turning left and there was one of the water sprayers who had a stop sign and blew through it and turned left and I had to slam my brakes and like skid to avoid getting T-boned by multi-ton vessel. And when my husband went to go talk to the foreman of the site to like bring up concerns about the drivers, he watched a couple other trucks also repeatedly blow through stop signs. And then also bringing up that, um, they have like a, going into their work site on two hundred fifty-eighth street. They have two gates that they're supposed to lock at the end of every day and through the weekend, but they leave it open. So people have just been driving through our street and through the construction site to go to the highway. And then like people from the construction team will like come bring their dogs to the site and just like let their dogs run around. And so they just leave the gates open all the time. So there's just like a couple of concerns with the quality of life and like safety of the people that are living near their construction and especially because they're gonna be continuing their construction for a couple more months.
Hey, um, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Kaylee. We'll make sure and work with our team to work with Tushi Suns, who's doing the construction on site. You bet. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Is there anybody else online wishing to address council? All right, that will include our first public comment period. We will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C one through C five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is new business item number one. Jenkins Creek Trail Phase One Project Update. Ethan?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, you may remember last year the city completed a master plan for Jenkins Creek Trail and then a schematic level design for the first phase of that trail. Uh, this year, the phase one design is advancing, uh, through design, uh, with the goal to start construction next year. Uh, to provide an update on this project and the design effort thus far, we have Chuck McDowell here. Chuck is a landscape architect with Herrera, our lead consultant on this project. Uh, Chuck serves as the project manager for Herrera, and he's also familiar with this project from last year, as he was involved in the master planning process and the schematic, uh, design for phase one. Uh, so with that, I will turn it over to Chuck to present the phase one project update.
Welcome, Chuck. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me tonight. Okay. Um, as Ethan mentioned, my name is Chuck McDowell, landscape architect and project manager with Herrera. I'll be providing a design update on the Jenkins Creek Trail, uh, Phase One Project tonight. Okay, um, a few things that we're gonna cover tonight. Just a brief project overview to remind you of the scope of work, uh, general project schedule, um, an update on the site assessments that have been completed to date, a design update, uh, design progress update, and our next steps. As Ethan mentioned, I was able to work on this project when I was with, uh, the facet team that worked with the city last year on the master plan and schematic design set. Um, I'm, uh, with a new company, but I'm very happy to continue working on this project with you all and, um, working with, uh, our partners, uh, Lund Opsel Tool Engineering, uh, cultural, uh, CRC One Alliance and, uh, HWA Geosciences. Start with a general project overview. So I took, uh, an excerpt from the Jenkins Creek Trail Master Plan, which was, um, completed last year and outlined in the diagram to the right is the Phase One Scope of Work. Um, this segment is the first phase in the master plan and it connects SR five sixteen to suit two hundred and sixty-fourth place and also includes improvements within Jenkins Creek Park. Zooming in on the project area, this project includes a new main trail, improved paths within the park, a new outlook deck structure within the park, uh, new trailheads at either end on the north and south sides, an improved park entrance, um, wayfinding and park amenities, and enhancements to the forested areas with new planting. I'll get into a bit more detail here in a few minutes, but that just is a, a broad overview of what was included in the scope of work. As for the project schedule, um, earlier this year, Herrera started working on the project with the city and the rest of our design team. We completed some initial site assessments and our site survey in, uh, the spring of this year. Uh, completed thirty percent design milestone, um, in July. And since then have been completing some additional site assessments and have been working on sixty percent design. As Ethan mentioned, we are targeting, um, completion of the construction documents permitting and construction into twenty twenty-six. As for the assessments that we've completed to date, we've completed a wetland delineation, which is needed because our project, um, is, runs adjacent to, uh, some of the wetlands within Jenkins Creek Park and the projects, project area to the south. We do not have any direct wetland impacts, but we will be locating the trail within some of the buffers. And we had our geotechnical engineers look at some of the slope conditions. Um, obviously within Jenkins Creek Park, there's some slopes that go down, um, to spring ponds, so making sure that we understand our design parameters as we're designing on the top of those slopes. Um, we looked at potential impacts to critical areas as well as opportunities for mitigation. Um, looked at cultural resources. We had our cultural resource consultant do potholing along the whole trail alignment to see if there was any identified sites. And, um, so far there have been no sites identified through that work. And then we completed an arborist assessment that looked at the whole project area from SR five sixteen up through Jenkins Creek Park. And I'm gonna highlight a couple of the takeaways from that scope of work, because it has influenced some of our design decisions to date. So the arborist assessment looked at, I think, five hundred and, uh, maybe seven hundred and fifty trees somewhere along that lines. Um, and what the intent of that work was, um, was to identify viable trees or trees that qualify as significant per the city's code. Uh, that's based on size, health, structure, risk of failure, diversity of species present. And, um, in some of the areas in the park and sites around there, uh, presence of laminated root rot. Um, and the goal of that survey was to identify trees that are, um, intended and valued for long-term retention. And, uh, the assessment identified five hundred and sixty-four significant trees uh, based on size, but of those, um, four hundred and eight of them were deemed, uh, not viable, um, based on health and structure. Or I should, sorry, I should say four hundred and eight of those were deemed viable based on, um, health and structure. Um, I will say that, you know, there is a lot of, uh, forest health issues within Jenkins Creek Park. Laminated root rot is quite present all throughout the, um, eastern portion of the park. And I will say, as we looked at some of the design implications of this, just because a tree is not viable, uh, viable, does not mean it will be removed. And I will say as we looked at some of the design implications of this, just because a tree is not viable, uh viable does not mean it will be removed. Uh, but it is you being used to inform our, our design. And the design update that I wanted to share tonight is uh to provide an update from the schematic design set which was completed last fall. Um, we have made a shift in where the trail is located partially because of the, the site assessments that I just mentioned. Um, and also some of the impacts of uh healthy trees that we were seeing in the previous alignment. So the, the, the shift occurred um primarily with the main trail alignment in blue there. Previously, we had showed the main trail going through Jenkins Creek Park along the top of the slope, so it's on the eastern side on the left diagram. And uh, the design update is shifting the trail further to the west um away from the top of slope. Okay, and, and rationale for doing that is that the main trail was really designed for both pedestrians and cyclists. It's a multi-use trail, we expect it to be connected to the larger trail network that will extend north and south in the future, so anticipating um more fast-moving users and lots of traffic. Um, so the, the path along the top of the slope is much more conducive to slow, more of a leisurely experience with views out over the park and over spring pond. It also allows for better connections that meet ADA standards. Uh, we also looked back at the Jenkins Creek Park Master Plan which calls for large open spaces and spaces that are oriented out over spring pond in the lower portion of the park. And this uh alignment better aligns with that vision of the park, providing more flexibility in the future as you all look to build out that master plan. Um, and in terms of the environmental implications, we worked with our geotechnical engineer and, and less work on the top of the slope is better. We can still do some trail improvements along the top of the slope, but in terms of the overall uh main trail, it's, it's better to push that further away from the slope. And last thing I'll point out on this topic is with the arborist report, the major areas of laminated root rot and really poor forest health were located on the east side of the park. And so we are looking at locating the park in a way that um primarily goes through areas of trees that are in poor condition and the trees that are located along the top of the slope on the west side of that upper bench within Jenkins Creek Park are in pretty good health. So we wanna find places where we can have less impact on those trees. And as we look at opportunities to locate the trail in the eastern portion of the park, we're looking at uh forest enhancement opportunities and as well. So it's, it's um multi-beneficial as we look at that move. So I'm gonna move on to general design update on thirty percent design. Um, and highlight a few of the uh program elements within the overall design. So the main trail is a shared use path, it's connecting SR five sixteen to two sixty-fourth street. It is designed to wash dot standards for shared use paths and it is fully accessible. Couple of cross-sections um on the right are some of the detail uh that we have pulled together so far. Um, the pavement will be twelve feet wide asphalt with two feet wide gravel shoulders to meet those washed-up design standards. We'll have some uh stormwater management along one side where we have retaining needed, we'll have some gabion walls and then adjacent to the trail will be improving the vegetation with native uh trees and understory plantings. And a couple of examples of some of these trails that have been built nearby. We'll also be adding two trailheads, one at southeast two sixty-fourth place on the north side of this project extent and then one on the south behind uh Red Robin on SR five sixteen. These will be pedestrian trailheads, no parking will be provided at these trailheads. Uh, we are also looking at park entry improvements at southeast two sixty-seventh street entrance at Jenkins Creek Park. Uh, that's a new element that we've added to the project because of the close proximity of the new trail alignment to that park entrance. So we are tracking it and if budget allows, it'll be included in the project. And the intent for all of these improvements will be that we're matching the new completed project over on the west side of the park at the parking lot. Uh, other than the main trail, the project is making improvements uh to existing paths within the upper portion of Jenkins Creek Park to improve accessibility. There's a lot of trails through there that have been impacted by roots or are not wide enough to meet the current standards within parks, so we're looking at improvements to those pathways as well and we're also adding a lookout deck in uh that portion of the park. So on the left are a couple of the existing conditions, some non-accessible paths that are in the park currently. And then the right is the lower path that connects the parking lot um over to the school and that's, that's the type of trail experience that you'll expect to see once the improvements are made. And then the, the lookout deck location, um, there's a couple of old concrete footings in that location and we're taking advantage of those and looking at adding a bit of a viewing structure that's slightly elevated that will generally match the character of the boardwalk that was provided over at the parking lot. And then um finally on some of the elements for the trail improvements, we're including two gravel paths with timber steps that will provide short connections, um shortcuts down to the lower area with, within Jenkins Creek Park. One of these is converting an existing asphalt path that has been impacted by uh tree roots and some erosion and it's, it's steeper than ADA, so it's more of a hazard than a benefit right now, so converting that to um a more of a, a gravel rustic path. And those, that path is shown on the, the two photos on the left there and then we'll be replacing it with something like uh the uh stairs on the right with the intent of maintaining an accessible connection um with the main existing trail there. And then in terms of our planting design, we're looking at opportunities for forest enhancements and um these will include both the wetland and stream buffers. Um, looking at forest health issues like laminated root rot and improving and increasing the diversity of the tree canopy within the park and looking at habitat structures and native understory. And to wrap up for uh next steps, we have some investigations, some site work that's happening out there um soon for our geotechnical engineering team. Uh, we're advancing sixty percent design which will take what I've just um presented to you a bit further in terms of the detailing, work on details, retaining walls, stormwater management, um the structure design, planting and buffer mitigation strategies. And then we'll be targeting permits and wrapping up design and construction in the next year. So with that, I will conclude and um open it up to questions.
Does counsel have any questions? Debbie.
Thank you. Well, so the, the last thing you said, I have a question on that, so um end of next year, uh is that, that's just the completion of the design or the completion of the construction?
So we, uh, we don't have a, a complex uh completion for construction date yet. We are um planning to advance design through the sixty percent milestone through the end of this fall, this winter, which will be what we target for our permit submittals. And then there's always a question of how long it will take to get some of those permits. The goal is to advance to uh ninety percent design and, and one hundred percent design into next year and targeting um sometime twenty twenty-six for construction, but that date has not been set.
Okay, thank you, and then a couple more. Um, where you find non-viable trees, should you need to remove them, will a new tree be planted in its place?
Yeah, so there are um some obligations that we have based on city code which is to replace viable trees and that will defer to the city code replacement standards, so non-viable trees do not need to be replaced per the code. However, we um, we have our arborist team that we're working with and because there are a number of non-viable trees that we are removing, we are likely going to recommend uh replacement above just purely what is required per the code. And the intent of that is to look at forest enhancement opportunities, knowing that we are gonna leave a lot of non-viable or not healthy trees up in that forested area. And we would like to do understory planting to increase the diversity so that can have somewhat of a forest successional uh process happen over time.
Great, thank you. Um, today where the open spaces um, so I, I know where that is, uh in the, your diagram, it shows that with the new trail being moved further to the east, will that enlarge the open space?
The open space that currently exists, so there's um the, the lawn area and then the forested area between uh the neighboring properties to the east and that lawn area. So the lawn area is not really going to change in size at all. We are going to be removing the um eastern existing path within that lawn area, so the lawn will actually expand by the amount of path that we are removing because we're essentially creating a larger loop now with this portion of the project.
Okay, thank you, and last question. Um, the new park entry, will that just be, well, it's an enhanced park entry. That, is that enhancing the current park entry where the parking lot is?
Okay, um, not, not the parking lot, no, so it's um uh southeast two sixty-seventh street, there's a dead end on the east side of the, of the upper portion of Jenkins Creek Park. And right now there's like a, a wire gate and a Jenkins Creek Park sign and
Yes.
a couple of, I, I think maybe a um park rules sign, it's, it's a pretty informal entry right now. We're looking to formalize that, provide access for um city maintenance vehicles to get in there uh and add some of the amenities that you see over at the parking lot into that space as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Uh, I just say that um I like moving the path to the east and adding the lookout. I don't know who was here back when we first got Jenkins Creek, but that path with the steps that you're adding is very close to what Jenkins Creek used to look like with the lookout. Um, from back in the late eighties, early nineties, it um hats, it was very nice and there was interpretive signs that the Boy Scouts had put in there for the different things, so that I applaud for moving that and adding the lookout.
Thank you, and yes, I should mention we are also doing uh including interpretive signage and have just kicked off that scope, so we're pretty early in in understanding what the themes and stories are that we're gonna be telling, but the, the project will be including uh three interpretive signs with, with this trail work.
Great, that's awesome, Beth.
Yeah, um, so the park entrance that's on the north side, is there an up? So I'm a nature trail person, I like to have both, right, asphalt's good for certain things, but is, is that part of that trail to that en- entry going to be included in the loop, I think it is, right, but is it? That blue little spur that's heading off?
Yeah, it's at a, there's an entry right there now at the dead end street.
Yeah. At the round, yeah, there's a little round. Is it, is that gonna be improved to the twelve feet or is there an opportu-
That's right, so it will be improved to the twelve feet, we took um, we took clue cues from the, the map, the park master plan there. So in the park master plan, you'll see more formal connection up to that uh cul-de-sac there and then to uh the uh east of that entrance, just as you come into the park, the master plan called out um areas for more rustic kind of natural area. Uh, I think bird watching was identified as an opportunity there, so we are not necessarily building any of that as a part of this project. But we've located the main trail in a way that creates uh enough space for those to still happen in the future as the city wants to invest in that master plan.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much, this is exciting news, I'm glad you were able to bring this update and looking forward to uh seeing what happens next year.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
You too, thank you. All right, new business item number two is to consider appointments to the youth council, does counsel wish to take action tonight? Debbie.
Yeah, sorry, let me get the appropriate language here. I move to appoint Eason Su to fill position number ten on the youth council with a term beginning immediately and expiring upon graduation from high school.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to appoint Eason Su to position number ten, Debbie would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, Eason uh is very dedicated to our community and he's very anxious to get further involved with what he can do to support the youth and the um students in in Covington, um he would like to stretch his um understanding of the city and, and build on his leadership skills. He's also um part of the high school level Rotary Club, the Rotary Act Club. Um, he, it was nice to hear from a young person that in, in his perspective, um, safety is going well in our city, he feels safe walking around. Um, but he wants to build on that and build on the opportunity to continue to engage youth in, in the safety of our city. Um, he, he's a methodical thinker, so he shared with us that he doesn't, he doesn't make quick decisions, but he likes to like kind of analyze and, and come up with uh more methodical um analysis. And he would like to serve on the youth council so that he can represent the city in a way that he can disseminate information back into the community and to other students, which is um exactly what we look for in our youth council. So I think that he would um do very well on our youth council.
Thank you Debbie, Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, I'll just add one thing, um uh Eason was the first person to ever say he wanted to be an ambassador after he left the city. So that was an interesting, I'd never heard anyone say that before and so um I thought that was it made me think about my experience, so anyway, I, I'm gonna support this nomination.
Yeah, thank you Sean, anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Eason Su to fill position number ten on the youth council with a term beginning immediately and expiring upon graduation from high school. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Eason. Next is new business item number three, consider appointments to the planning commission, does counsel wish to take action this evening? Debbie.
Thank you. Um, I would like to move to fill um to, I'm sorry, let's see my
No, you've
Yes, Stephanie Hunsaker
Okay.
as reappointment. And I'm trying to find position number three with the term that expires August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine. Um, Stephanie.
I'll second it, I'll second.
I need a second, okay, thank you, go ahead Debbie, would you like to speak here? No, you're excited to go right ahead.
I am, I am excited. Um, well, first I'd like to say that I'm grateful that we had so many people reapply for the planning commission. That has to be one of the most complex as Stephanie noted this evening, but the, with, she made the comment that it, it would probably like scare off any anyone that would come and watch, well, it kind of scares off, scares off a council member too. Um, uh, she talked about uh wanting to, that she's done a deep dive and in working on our comp plan with, which is extremely complex, those are my words. Um, and she would like to continue working on that. Um, she does a lot of educating her community on what she's learning through the planning commission and that's one of the things she sees as being of value to the commission because she works in real estate and can can disseminate that information back to her clients, to the community, but also learn from them that she takes to the planning commission. Um, she's the first person I have ever heard say that they'd like to do longer meetings or more meetings because it's so complex and you get right in the middle of it and then your time is up, and so um, I appreciate Stephanie that wants to give more time um to the commission. And um she had great things to say about the staff that leads the commission, she said that they, they really build on trust with their knowledge, so that's good to hear. Um, but I think they're equally as thrilled to have such great commissioners.
Thank you Debbie, Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, um, first off, very grateful for all the time that you've already done on the commission and um, I just um appreciate that you, Stephanie brought up the point that yes, that there, there has been a deep dive into uh, well, the mandates and what must be done and then um as far as I can see, she's very excited about the future and where the planning commission can actually make um, specific things that influence our residents, you know, from a more commissioned. Yeah, from a more commissioned perspective and is excited about that where they can actually have their own input versus just things that you have to, you know, tedious things, but their input, their personal input, and I'm excited to uh, to hear her inputs in that area. And yeah, I, I do appreciate her passion for educating the um, the community. Uh, she said that multiple times and I know she has a lot to offer. And I hope as well that we can have more time between our council and planning commission meetings because those truly feel like they get cut short as well, um, right? truly feel like they get cut short as well, um, right? When we get into the, the good stuff. So I wholeheartedly support this nomination.
Thanks, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Stephanie Hunsaker to fill position number three with a term expiring August thirty first, two thousand twenty nine. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Stephanie. Uh, does council wish to take further action? Sean?
Yeah, I'd like to uh, nominate David Cottle, fill position number four with the term expiring August thirty first, twenty twenty nine. Jennifer, second.
Thank you. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, you know, David's one of our longtime um, volunteers. Um, he's been committed to this community, uh, and I just appreciate his willingness to, to serve. Um, you know, talked about some of the core issues he's um, interested in um, and how we can um, better uh, improve planning commission's work. Um, body suggestions on getting information sooner um, so that they can read and digest it better. Um, you know, and he's been instrumental in working on the comp plan and the tree canopy. So I think uh, he's got some experience that and um, institutional knowledge that we want to keep on the, on the planning commission, so.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, um, as a council member, I very much have always appreciated David's thorough reports and his ability to truly, you know, and I am sure a couple of the other council members that have served on planning as I have, how he can take everything that has been discussed at a planning uh, commission meeting and condense it in a thorough but understandable way to us at a council meeting. I, I, it's a gift how well he does it, quite honestly. Um, also, I really appreciated when we interviewed him, one of the things that he was most proud of was standing up for our rights with respect to legislative mandates. Like, yes, hallelujah to that. That's exactly what we need, our planning commission um, advocating for our residents. Um, in that way. Also, uh, I was really intrigued, you know, he really works to, to stay relevant in his comment about using AI to really digest a lot of the material and do his own research when prepare when preparing for really thoughtful dialogues on planning. Uh, that was, you know, especially in my day job, how we're doing similar things with AI. It was, it was really intriguing uh, to me to, to hear someone on one of our commissions really uh, being motivated in that way. And also is his questions about our future thoughts on uh, policies surrounding uh, e-bikes and uh, scooters and also videos and surveillance. I mean, spot on. These are definitely things we should be thinking about as a council. So uh, I highly recommend uh, David for uh, reappointment to planning.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright. Been moved and seconded to appoint David Cottle to fill position number four with a term expiring August thirty first, two thousand twenty nine. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, David. Council wish to take further action tonight? So um, sorry about the interruption. Jennifer?
Yes, I move and I, sorry, because it's on a screen. I move to appoint uh, Murray Williams to position if someone could help me with the position.
Number six, expiring August thirty first, two thousand twenty nine.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Christina seconds. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, um, Murray, uh, thrilled to see him back reapplying for uh, uh, planning and he, again, one of those people that really takes uh, this work on the commission very seriously and thoroughly. Um, his vision for the, for future work on planning is a more comprehensive look and feel to our buildings and um, the aesthetics of Covington and um, he had some uh, great ideas for i- improving the, the work done by the, the commission in um, increasing the joint meeting to, to twice a year and then also doing something similar to some of the other commissions and rotating who gives a report, which I think um, is a great idea. It gives, you know, lots of uh, others visibility besides the chair. So um, again, another uh, really high praise and uh, nomination for appointment of Murray Williams.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, but very shortly because Jennifer covered it all. Um, I, I too have uh, the same praises. Um, and, and I agree with the two annual meetings versus the one. Um, that was a great suggestion uh, by Murray. And ultimately, I'll just say this, that you hear it all the time, but um, I've heard multiple times that uh, most commissioners specifically on planning um, have been singing praises to Selena and Daphne and that they love working together and that they're brilliant and that they can trust um, um, both Selena and Daphne. And um, it's really good to hear. And I, I'm, I'm proud of our staff and that and, and it's probably one of the reasons why this commission is so wonderful. And I wholeheartedly support Murray.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? I just want to add that when um, Murray had to um, step down, take care of some things, similar to when uh, David did several years ago, uh, stepped down to take care of a few things. When I spoke with both these gentlemen, uh, because they're, uh, everybody that's on our planning commission does an outstanding job. Um, David and Murray have been on our count, our planning commission for quite some time. But they both said at separate times that because I asked them if they would be interested in getting back on the planning commission, and they didn't say if, they said they would definitely entertain that. It's not a question of if it's when. And so I am so thankful that David came back several years ago and I'm glad that Murray is um, reapplying this time as well. Uh, because the valuable information that um, everybody has on there. So I would support this nomination as well. Anybody else? It's moved and seconded to appoint Murray Williams to fill position number six with a term expiring August thirty first, two thousand twenty nine. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Murray. Uh, we do have a fourth position available. Does council wish to take action tonight?
I move to appoint Damon Katra to fill position number seven with a term expiring August thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to appoint Damon Katra to fill position number seven. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, Adamin's been involved in the community and other um, roles such as uh, CEDIS and the business to business. So she's familiar and has a, a great outreach with members in the community already. Um, she does have professional experience in managing projects, uh, building and construction projects. So I think her eye for detail and um, looking at from the other side of, as a city or a permit giver instead of a permit asker, uh, is uh, going to be very helpful, uh, and looking, looking at decisions through that lens. Um, it was really interesting when she said that she didn't really have any direct experience with the planning commission, but from time to time she likes to read the codes online and I thought, well, gosh darn.
Yeah.
You, you're steps ahead of probably a lot of us. So um, appreciate the, the research that she put into understanding the role. And I think probably the other thing that um, she seems to have a very balanced approach to, you know, planning housing, parks, also preserving nature and, and knowing what the community values and using those values to help assist, assist council making decisions and helping us. Um, we do it together, but they can provide a different um, lens and recommendations uh, to us so that we can work together and make a decision. And I think probably the, the wrap up for me was um, she wants to ensure full faith in the community with what the city is doing. Um, and really has a desire to, to be approachable and use all of her experience and skills to help reach out to the community and um, get them involved.
Thank you, Beth. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. Um, I agree with everything that Beth said and Damon um, has done a great job um, with the, the CEDIS um, group. She's also got a strong presence in the community through a number of activities that she gets engaged in, but she's very much an ambassador. She's very inquisitive. Um, as you noted, if she um, doesn't understand something, she goes and she digs and gets the answers. I think that will make her um, an attribute to the planning commission. And while she said she, she, I also picked up on what she said that she, well, she didn't really have any direct or related experience to planning commission, but in her, in her professional role, she's responsible for um, building data centers all over the country, if not globally, um, given that her, her company is a global company. Um, that takes an incredible amount of work to work through different cities and their codes and permitting and working with construction crews. So it's a very relatable experience. Um, she loves this community. She'll, she'll do a great job and um, she'll also do as others do. She'll disseminate that information back into our community so that they understand what's happening. So.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Damon Cottrell. He filled position number seven with a term expiring August thirty first, two thousand twenty nine. All those in favor state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. I just want to say thank you to Stephanie, David, Murray and Damon um, for applying and reapplying for the planning commission. It is a very difficult commission with a lot and lot of reading and homework. And I just appreciate each of your de- attention to detail to uh, bring information to us at the council. And uh, I know it's a lot of hard work, so thank you. Thank you, each of you. With that, we'll move on to new business item number four, consider authorizing the city manager to execute nine participation forms and an allocation agreement for regarding the national opioid settlement with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family and eight generic opioid manufacturers. And I'm gonna turn this over to Mark.
And it's all yours, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor Wagner. Um, this is the sixth time that I have appeared before you at the council meeting to bring an action item related to the opioid crisis. Um, this current item before you is uh, for a hundred and twenty-two point two million dollar settlement that was entered in into by the, between the Washington State Attorney's General Office, Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family and eight other generic opioid manufacturers. So Washington settlements are part of multi-states, multi-state settlements with these companies. And these are new and in addition to what the council has already approved. And as you look, see in the agenda bill, you've seen that in April of twenty twenty-two, you first approved the Washington, one Washington MOU which set for, set out the allocation um, formula and how just funds would be distributed amongst counties, the state and cities in Washington. And then from there, uh, most, uh, the, the rest of the district of the settlements have followed that same under the one Washington MOU. And there have been allocation agreements for other opioid distributors, uh, additional allocation agreements, more opioid manufacturers, settlements with Johnson and Johnson and a settlement with Kroger. And this one today will bring the total to more than one point three billion that will be distributed between Washington State, um, the counties and local governments. Um, it's not getting a full fifty fifty split because there are uh, attorney's fees and other administrative costs that go into the um, these various settlements. So where it stands right now is five hundred seventy-eight million is going to local governments in Washington. Eighty million of that, that is going to King County. And based upon the formula, the allocation for um, Covington is not a very large amount, but sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents. And these, let me pull up one thing. And these follow a very similar path to what we have already entered into. And uh, though, just as a quick reminder for how these settlements were set up and how the allocations formulas were made. Uh, for the fifty percent, that was for the, for the counties. Um, there were three factors that they, that they weighed. It was the, uh, one was the amount of opioids shipped to the county. Two was the number of opioid deaths in the county. And three, the number of people who suffer opioid use disorders. And from there, they set, set up how much money would go to each county. And then from there, the cities and local governments have, were given their allocations based upon the federal database and historical data regarding what the different entities and what the different jurisdictions had previously, previously spent on opioid related expenditures. So the, this does come with a little bit of a, of a timeline or it, because September thirtieth is the deadline for local governments to sign on, onto the allocation agreement and settlements. And in order for these to be approved, all of the participating uh, states, counties, cities must uh, must approve and submit back the participation forms and allocation agreements. Otherwise, the settlement will be void. One thing to keep in mind with this as well is that uh, when entering into these settlements, it waves um, and really it waves our right to pursue litigation against these companies. And it releases those companies from future claims. So that's, that's the bargain that's being made for this. So it, with that, I don't have anything additional to report on this, but I would be happy to, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Done.
Mark, um, just on that kind of last point there, I'm curious. So this, so signing these will um, waive our right to sue or file future claims for past action? Will these companies continue or um,
Yeah, so it's what's
Future crimes?
Uh, it has nothing to do with what thing, with something that may occur in the future. It's all for, or it's for actions that have already occurred.
Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mark? Beth?
I just want to make sure that I, I heard you correctly. Out of the one point three billion, about five hundred million is going to the cities and the rest is going to the attorneys.
Uh, not quite. So it's, it's about five hundred million plus is going to the state and five hundred million plus is going to the counties and the cities.
Okay, okay, okay.
So there, there, there is a, I, I don't know the breakdown for how much of that is going to attorney's fees and other administrative costs, but um, it's close to one billion dollars has been distributed between the state, the counties and local governments in Washington.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank, thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Council before us is the um, a motion to authorize the city manager to execute, a potential motion to authorize the city manager to execute the allocation agreement for the Purdue settlement and the eight settlements with generic opioid manufacturers in substantial form as attached. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm The opioid crisis has caused a lot of heartache, hurt, unnecessary death. Uh, I believe sixty-eight thousand dollars to our community is, is not even a drop in the bucket to really help fight the opioid crisis. I don't think the billions of dollars that have been uh, won in court costs have been enough to do it. But it's a start for education to make sure that we're doing the right things by the people who live in our community, the people who live around our community. And hopefully we can get some better resources. And hopefully we can get some better resources for the people who are suffering through this. So it's not a lot, but it will do something.
Thank you, Joe. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Um well, one, it's been consistent with the other letters that we've had the ability to sign on. Um I would see no reason why we wouldn't. Um I agree sixty eight thousand dollars is not a lot, but every dollar we get, we put to use um in any way that we can, whether it's supporting rehabilitation, housing, public safety. So for those reasons, I believe that we need to sign on.
Great. Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the allocation agreement for the Purdue settlement and the eight settlements with the generic opioid manufacturers in substantial form as attached. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for bringing this to us, Mark. That concludes new business. Looking at future agenda. Um our next council meeting is on September twenty third. Uh, don't forget though that on uh, well, I'll cover that when we get to council staff comments. Does council have anything they would like to see on a future agenda? Alright, then let's move into council staff comments. I do not see Adam. So let's move to Ethan.
Uh, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Don.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Selena.
Good evening, council. Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey.
Um I was just gonna say just a reminder that we have the exit conference for the first half of the audit on Thursday at ten thirty. It'll be remote. And if you'd like to attend, please let uh Krista and I know so we can have them any quorum issues checked before we move forward. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to apologize to the council for not being in person tonight for my presentation on the opioid settlement crisis. I'm out of the area right now, but I'll be back in uh I'll be back starting next week. So I hope to see all of you in person soon. And other than that, there's no executive session and I have no additional report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Regan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out something, a stat we just uh collected for a second quarter. So April, May and June in our athletics department, the volunteer hours by our coaches and just that quarter was one thousand one hundred and twenty seven hours. And I just think that's a really beautiful thing that um, you know, obviously Ethan and his team do an amazing job running our athletics and other parks and rec departments, but without those volunteers, um these things couldn't happen. So it's just really cool uh to see that amount of hours in three months uh given to the city and our youth. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Regan. Krista.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina.
Um, yes, uh coming up on the nineteenth, uh which is actually a big day between ribbon cuttings and movie night popcorn, we are also having a legislative forum for um a skip legislative forum, which we are holding in Taquilla this time. Multiple uh representatives from different districts are invited. And unfortunately, this is not for like all of councils or all of in council even um as we have certain representatives. It's kind of a small, the intent is for it to be a small and intimate event, but to showcase the good that Skip does do and to to have an informational to get on the radar. And so we're pretty excited about that. And that same night, I get to go and serve popcorn, which is actually really exciting. I have not done that yet and I'm truly looking forward to that. Um, on a bright note, I ran into somebody outside of Covington at an event just a few nights ago, who is a nurse practitioner here in Covington. Um, who just works just right there at the valley and walks every break, lunch, any moment that she gets, she walks Covington. And she, it was awesome to hear that she said that if she compares how the walking was, say, three or four years ago, even two years ago versus now, it's so much cleaner. She feels like it's a lot safer. Um and that's like a daily daily assessment of what's going on in Covington. So that was really good to hear and hats off to all of our teams, the the clean team, the, you know, safety officers, everyone. Uh that was really good to hear. Um it didn't, it was uncalled for, so it was just a nice compliment to everyone that is on board with that. Um so yeah, thank you for a great meeting and I'm looking forward to Mayor's Day of Concern. There's a there's a lot going on. I feel like we took a few weeks off, but there's it's ramping up again, and I'm excited to see everyone soon and again.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
I'm just again thankful for all the applicants to the planning commission and the reaplic- reaplicants. I I know I I was uh going through public records training with Murray when we both were appointed back in two thousand seventeen. So it's been a while and it's great to see him back as in it's um it's it's great to have that tribal knowledge. Um but uh same to Stephanie, David and and Domin and all of the applicants on the youth council as well. So um looking forward to all the the fall events, Makers Market, Mayor's Day, and of course, Purple Light Night on Saturday, the twenty seven, six P M for a community walk and tree lighting and um it will be, it'll be fun event. So pass the word along. We'd love to have everybody come um and provide support for those uh for domestic violence um awareness, those that have suffered or have lost their lives or are still trying to escape those chains. So and we celebrate survivors too. So there's fun element. It's not all sad. Um, and I don't have a whole lot else just because getting ramped back up for fall, but.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see everyone again. Yeah, it feels like it's been a while. Um uh last RFA meeting was canceled, so I don't have a update there. Um I recently stopped by the Jenkins Creek Park, parked in the parking lot and happy to see there's a number of people now using the park. So um it's word is spreading. Uh and then on a kind of a similar different note about word spreading, my my wife was out last week at an event and mentioned she was from Covington and unsolicited, someone said, hey, we're going to the drive-in movie that evening. So that word is spreading as well. So anyway, that's all I got.
Great. Thank you, Sean. Yeah. Debbie?
Thank you. Um also skateboard uh cancel cancelled their August meeting, but um so we didn't have that. But this month, we are meeting in person in Seattle with the joint meeting with PRC and there may be one other transportation related um uh board or committee that's going to meet with us. So so we've got that coming up. And then tomorrow night, excuse me, um Lake Warnerwood HOA asked for council representation. I'll be attending that. And then Adam wasn't available to come and talk about crime stats, which the Adam and I have kind of tag teamed on that HOA group before. And so they they had asked for Adam to attend. He's not able. So Regan's going to come. I thank you for that. We're gonna talk about MPD um Jenkins Creek Park um to give them an update on on the new things that are there and what's coming. And then Lake Point, they're always interested in that. Drive-in movies, I know I was able to do um some of the popcorn handout at the at the park, so it'll be different. I've not attended any of the drive-in movies. I get to do the night they're doing Wicked. Um but I didn't have any grandkids or kids or husband that wanted to sit through the drive-in, so I I gave up my spot for that. Um so then, yeah, we've got the Mayor's Day of Concern on the twentieth and also Makers Market. So a lot going on on the twentieth and then Purple Light Night on the twenty seventh. So um lots going on, exciting. I think October will kind of start off October eleventh. I'm I know we've talked about this many times, but it's the um storehouses first, which will become annual um food drive. I'm sorry, not food drive, auction. Um so we're looking forward to that. Everything is going really well with that auction in spite of Stephanie being on vacation, which is why Ryland um accepted the proclamation tonight. Um, we've got twelve sponsors. Um, we've got a fifty thousand dollar donor for matching funds. Uh, we've got nearly seventy five, eighty percent of the table seats sold. So I think we're gonna max out. I think we'll be sold out of seats before the week before the event. So and thank you to Krista for helping um with the photo shoot yesterday, last night um on the auction items. So it's it's looking good. I hope that everybody will try to attend. And I I know Mr. Mayor is our guest speaker.
I hope that video goes well for me.
I came in right after you had done your video. It will be fine. It's great. He's doing Tracy as well. So.
Longest video I've ever done.
Oh, wow. Well, I'm sure he'll cut cut it.
Yeah, I hope.
Yeah, I'm sure. How long was it? Like thirty minutes?
I think we recorded for forty minutes.
Okay, I'm sure he's just gonna use snippets.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for.
Yeah, we don't want to bore you, but.
No, no, no.
It was a long, but it was good. He was very good.
Good.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Deb. Joe. Oh, excuse me, Jennifer. Sorry, Jennifer. Sorry, Joe.
All good, all good. Um I am extremely thankful to be able to attend virtually. My life the past few weeks has been uh just I've been put through the wringer, so I'm excited. Uh this uh the next couple of days, everything will just be perfect and I'll be at all the events and um everyone will be uh healthy and uh uh yeah, so looking forward to it. Sorry for not being able to do the drive-in on Friday. My daughter and her friend were bummed as well, but um I was I was literally in bed dying of COVID, so um I know people don't want my nasty COVID popcorn hands all over their Alright, yeah, that's it. Looking forward to coming up.
Joe?
Uh, I have picked tomorrow night in person and for the first time in a year. And Christina, you do not have to attend this time for me in person. I will be there in Mercer Island tomorrow night. I will be running the meeting. Uh Chris Roberts cannot make it. We are going to discuss uh the King County Library System Level E with lift. Uh, King County Transportation District pre uh upcoming, we're gonna talk about the upcoming council decision. And we'll have some possible action on the new indigent uh defense caseload standards. We have the draft letter, so we're probably just gonna be talking about the language, making sure that we've uh put the periods in the right place, put the uh commas there, make Jennifer happy to put uh also and or whatever her phrases that she really likes.
We're all.
For all people.
For all people. There we go. Thank you. Um, I'll make I'll make sure that some of that gets in there for you, Jennifer. Uh then uh I have RTC next week. It'll be our first meeting in a month. Uh I just got the packet today, so I couldn't tell you what we're talking about, but I will let you all know. And this was interesting. I saw this yesterday. And I'm uh letting you know that I'm going to put in for a possible proclamation, but Crestwood is turning forty five this year. So and they're doing a celebration on October first, which is a Wednesday from four to six P M. Uh, I having children who have either are attending or did attend Crestwood, I'll probably be there just for fun, but um might try to put up if my I'll put in a request for proclamation. We'll see if it happens to be something cool to honor the uh the school with. See what else. Which is gonna be sad that one of my children cannot attend that because we are taking Ryan to college on the nineteenth, so I will not be at the drive-in on the nineteenth. I'll be there the next week though. And I will be at the um Mayor's Day of Concern, kind of tired because it's gonna be a long drive to Cheney and back on one day, but I will be at Mayor's Day of Concern uh with coffee in my hand, of course, um at bright and early that next morning. And that's that's really all I have. Oh, I am, um I also took another I'm gonna start sounding like a former council member snowy when I say I took another job. Uh, I am coaching soccer at Cedar Heights, so come out to games on Mondays and Fridays, come out to Cedar Heights and root on uh some of our residents and their kids.
Thank you, Joe. Um, speaking of the drive-in, I did the drive-in movie uh last Friday, uh Beauty and the Beast, and they were actually there.
Oh, wow.
And so this Friday is frozen too, so Elsa and Anna will be there. Um, I don't know if any of the other will be there, but I know Elsa and Anna will be. Speaking of the drive-in movies, I just Sarah, Parks Department, Public Works, all did an awesome job. I was flabbergasted with how well it was organized and how well it ran. I all I had to do is I know normally they would like council to go to each car to hand out the popcorn. I'm not, I wasn't able to. Still not able to. Um but it's amazing how many people came up. And it's not, they didn't just come up to get the popcorn. They came up to talk about things, city business and stuff. The parents did, not the kids. All the kids wanted was the popcorn. Um but it was, it was very well done. I was I was impressed and how well Public Works cordoned everything off and worked to make sure that it was a safe experience for for people. So thank you for that. And I I'm sure that they the following, the future drive-in movies are gonna be just as good. Uh, August sixth, August fifteenth, the owners of Happy Lemon here in Covington opened a new business in Black Diamond as well. So I attended that. Uh ribbon cutting is part of the Covington Chamber Commerce as well as Black Diamond Chamber Commerce. Uh it's a natural food uh juice bar. And it's just amazing. Um my daughter will still say Happy Lemon is the best. Um that's where she but so it's amazing that they've opened. So they have now I think they said seven businesses that they operate. So they're doing a great job. And then that Saturday, the sixteenth, Nikki celebrated their third anniversary. So we did a uh grand reopening because they remodeled inside their restaurant and it is amazing. They really upgraded. Uh so it was a pleasure doing that grand opening as well. And then the Jenkins Creek, that is beyond what I imagined that parking entrance would be. Um it's already been brought up, Makers Market on uh September twentieth, I'll be at and also be at Mayor's Day of Concern at all three locations. I'll be hobbling around, but it's for a good cause for the citizens. And then, yeah, I'm looking forward to um the storehouse, the first Hope fundraiser for a building. It's hard to believe that a million pounds of food comes out of that fourteen, it's only a fourteen hundred square foot building. And a million pounds come out of that. So I am so impressed with where it started in nineteen ninety nine, just delivering a few boxes of food and how what parts grow. Make had a really good vision. Uh, that is all I have. Let's move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, organization, and whether they are a Covington resident. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business and comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. Attendees participating by Zoom, please click the raise hand button. And once city grants permission, please press unmute in Zoom. With that, is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Is there anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody approach the podium or raising their hand, uh that will close public comment period. We do not have an executive session. This meeting is adjourned at eight thirty. I waited till it hit eight thirty.